Hey everybody, I'm Erica Sanzi, the Director of Outreach here at Parents Defending Education, and thank you so much for joining us for what I know is going to be a very interesting conversation. And I will be learning along with you as we are talking about an organization that is new and exciting and important, and I'm going to be looking forward as well to learning as much as you are. Okay, so our guest today, his name is David Hoyt, and he is the Executive Director of a new organization or newish called the School Boards for Academic Excellence, a national nonprofit organization dedicated to empowering school board members to reassert academic excellence in America's schools. Most importantly, David is also the father of two. David, thanks for joining us.
My pleasure. Thank you for having me.
Okay, so to start out, can you just introduce our viewers to your organization, School Boards for Academic Excellence, in terms of like, how and why did it get started, what do you guys do, and what is the goal?
So yes, I think your folks would be familiar with the National School Boards Association, because I know you guys published a lot of research and did a lot of work on exposing some of the excesses of the NSBA, which is the Nationwide Network of Legacy School Board Associations, which are like the professional development associations for school board members that gives them policy guidance, insurance, legal support, and all those sorts of things. And so SBAE was created to be the reform-minded alternative to the NSBA. So we're also a nationwide network of state-based organizations that work directly with school board members, with the key difference being, whereas the NSBA and your establishment state school board associations tend to be, when they do weigh in on controversial issues, on the other side of the types of things that SBAE network partner organizations are weighing in on. So for instance, whereas we would push policies to have high academic and curricular standards, the NSBA is mute or even worse on things like that. And so we're now operating in 38 states with 45 partner organizations that are taking on different parts of what the state school board associations do. One of the most common elements is training school board members, so especially newly electeds. They might not have a good lay of the land of what it just takes to be a legislator, things like Robert's Rules of Order. The state school board associations are not teaching them how to use Robert's Rules of Order and other things like that to try to make needed improvements in the school districts. So that's what the SBAE network is doing.
Awesome, thank you. And as a former school board member myself, from 2010 to 2012, I can confirm that it is true that members are often not learning a lot of things that they need to know, and also that the focus on academic achievement is not nearly where it needs to be. And also, just for our viewers, many of you were following a few years back when the National School Boards Association was involved sort of with the Biden White House in coming after parents and criticizing parents who were speaking out at school board meetings about their concerns, and the language that was used by the National School Boards Association was to refer to parents as potential, I think, potential domestic terrorists, or calling our concern at the microphones potential domestic terrorism. So this national organization has, you know, been highly politicized. I think that that's obvious, and it's very refreshing to see a new organization emerge to sort of counteract what has clearly become a highly ideological and political organization. Okay, I have to assume that COVID has played a pretty big role also in some of the work that you're doing. So I guess I would ask, sort of generally, how has the fallout from COVID affected or changed the role of school boards, not only in the work that they do, but in how they are perceived by the public?
Definitely, yeah. The COVID lockdowns, the mask mandates, and all that stuff, I think is what really spurred on a lot of the parent reaction to what was going on in school districts. And I think the biggest change has been that, you know, your typical parent doesn't pay a huge amount of attention to what actually happens day to day in a school board, certainly doesn't attend school board meetings typically. We're busy, we don't have time for stuff like that. I didn't go to them before I got involved in education policy. So I think it was Tom Woods, a good Austrian economist historian, who made the observation once that most parents spend more time deciding what kind of car they'll buy next than researching what their kids are learning in school. And it's funny, but I think it's true. But what happened with COVID was, because people were forced to have their kids stay at home, they saw what was going on in classrooms in their living room. And I think a lot of people were shocked to see that really radical, not academics and education-focused curriculum were being taught. And then, of course, you had the mask mandates and lockdowns, which there's no shortage now of evidence that showed that lockdowns were not effective. Masks are minimally effective. And, but school boards proved to be completely unconcerned about what parents wanted in a great many places. And so that was what inspired, I think, a lot of activist groups to get started and start pushing back against school boards. But in reality, those things have been going on for a long time. School boards, education, curriculum, these things had been moving in what I would consider to be a politically radical direction for decades. It really goes all the way back to, if you look at the progressive movement early on in the country, the guy who is considered largely the godfather of the public education system, John Dewey, who was an avowed socialist, maybe more in the neo-Marxist mold. And the public education system has been moving in that direction for decades. And so I think, to your point, COVID really just exposed what had been metastasizing for a long time.
And also, I feel like in many places, the school board, and I should say that here, if anyone listening in the Northeast, we call school boards "school committees." So, but again, essentially this elected body that we're talking about here that governs the school district. In many cases, it's sort of like becomes automatic. The superintendent makes a recommendation, the committee kind of rubber stamps it without really asking questions or looking into it. Are you seeing that sort of, that automaticity of that process change, again, since, perhaps since COVID, or maybe even before that?
Absolutely, yeah. And that is 100% right. I think the most powerful force in any school district, division, district is inertia. And the reason for that is, you know, if you put yourself in the shoes of a school board member, and we talk to school board members every day, reforming these gigantic institutions is hard. Where I live in Jacksonville, Florida, which is not a huge population area, our school district is the entirety of the county. So we have 120,000 students, and the school district is a $2 billion a year operation. So you can't just turn that ship around overnight. Making reforms are challenging, and especially if you're a school board and you have a governance and oversight role. The administration is really in charge of the day-to-day activities, which would be fine if they were operating at a high level. And I'm not talking about Duval specifically, but in many other school districts, they're not operating at a high level. And if you look at the academic outcomes, the proof is in the pudding. So that's one of the things that SBAE was really sorely needed for is, school board members are in a uniquely difficult position in making those changes. So what we try to do is, we have turnkey solutions so that when they go into that board meeting, they know exactly what they want to accomplish, and then it's going to be the right thing for their school district.
What are the biggest challenges and issues that you think school boards are facing right now? And how are they different than, let's say, five years ago?
Well, there's a learning loss from COVID. That's been a huge problem, it's well documented. But the thing to me is, if you look at where the scores were nationally before COVID, it's not like they were great beforehand. The latest National Assessment of Educational Progress, NAP, which is sort of like the nation's report card, it's the closest thing we have to a nationally normed standardized test, showed that, I think, if memory serves, in eighth grade, 31% tested proficient or better in reading, and 26% tested proficient or better in math. To me, that's completely inexcusable, that is a national crisis. So the biggest problem that school boards have run into over the last five years is that the, what I would refer to as the education establishment, the people that are coming out of the schools of education, and I say that, let me add the caveat, my mom was a teacher, she has a master's degree in education. Teachers are absolutely heroes, and we are a million percent pro teachers. So I'm not being critical of teachers at all. And I'm not even being critical of administrators as a category. However, on the whole, the solutions that are being proposed to these acknowledged education problems by the education establishment, the thought leaders in mainstream education, are not promoting things that are actually going to help very often. Now, there have been some recent advances, such as the explosion of science of reading and learning literacy standards. But then again, a lot of school districts are not implementing what's been passed in, I think, 30-plus states now to try to improve literacy. So I think a lot of the biggest challenges, A, recognizing the seriousness of the problem, and then B, pursuing things that actually make it better.
Yeah, and I would just add to that, as I've watched this over the years, you know, as a former teacher, also very pro teacher over here, and also as a parent, and also as a sitting school board member for those two years, is that the focus has really shifted. So it's not only that your outcomes aren't strong, but the focus of the district, the board members, and the various committees inside the school are often about issues that we could argue have no place in the school system. So whether we're talking about, you know, this dividing kids up by their skin color, talking to children about gender identity at very young ages, you know, and including, you know, moving gender identity in as a subject in an AP Biology class. So it seems like the ideology piece has really become a problem because in addition to bad outcomes, you have this ideological capture that's really taking up time and a ton of money and shifting the priorities. And again, I have just seen that as, just having been in classrooms, I was in classrooms in 2015 still, that was my last year teaching. And what I've been seeing, you know, in the past couple of years is just unrecognizable compared to what I saw even as recently as 2015, which has also helped people understand, if they feel like, oh my gosh, like what's happening? It feels like it changed so fast, it did. In terms of like, the most important thing for new school board members, in terms of knowledge and training, what do you think, again, are the most important things for them to learn and know coming into that role?
I think the most important thing is understanding their roles and responsibilities, and having the confidence to say, "I was elected to represent the values and goals of my constituents, and I'm here to make that happen." And within that oversight and governance role, it's incumbent upon them to hold the administrators accountable to those things. So one of the first things that we try to teach school board members is, let's take a look at what are the goals, what are the actual metrics for success for your school district? And then we coach them through a process of establishing SMART goals, like the acronym SMART, Specific, Measurable, Achievable, et cetera. So that, and then the key thing is, you know, have goals, have a limited number of goals, and have them be achievable goals. So for instance, there was a school board in Kansas that one of our partner groups was talking with, and they asked about their academic goals. And they said, "Well, our goal is to become one of the top 10 school districts in the country, and they're in the bottom quartile of the state of Kansas." So obviously, that's not a realistic goal. It's admirable in a certain sense, but it's not realistic. I was talking to another school board member in the Carolinas, and I was asking him, you know, how the metrics were in his district. And he said, "Well, our literacy rate is actually one of the highest in the state, it's at 50%." And as soon as he said it, he realized, well, that actually doesn't sound that great. But the reality is, it actually is one of the better ones in their state. So that's one of the first and most important things is getting those goals set, and then figuring out how are we going to hold administrators accountable to those goals, including looking at those goals in every single board meeting, having dedicated time, and then putting it in the assessments and the reviews for the administrative team, and making sure it's distilling down throughout their management structure that everybody is rowing in that same direction. That's one of the most important things they can do. And it's squarely in the wheelhouse and authorities of a school board. But that's very rare, I've found, where school boards realize that they have the authority to do that because the administrative team constantly gives them pushback. The state school board association constantly gives them pushback. And even the attorneys for the school board itself will tell them, you know, "This is not your role, stay out of it, let the administration run the show." And again, that'd be fine if they were doing a good job, but in many places, they're not.
Yeah, and actually, you made a point a couple of minutes ago that I forgot to comment on, which is talking about how large the school district is where you are in Jacksonville, and how it's like trying to move the Titanic. But what I would say about that is, it's even really hard in these smaller school districts, because I live in the state of Rhode Island, which is tiny, and yet we have 36 school districts. So just to give a sense, like my district is about, I think, 4,500 kids. And people would be shocked even to know how hard it is to make change in some of these districts. Now, that's in part because the unions are very powerful here, and it's in part because of the inertia thing that you're talking about, and it's in part because of, you know, I don't know, just sort of, I really don't know what the problem is in some cases. But this idea that, oh, it's just hard in big districts, but in small districts, this should be really easy to pivot quickly, yes, it should be, but it isn't. So anyway, it just made me think of that, that it's very difficult in places where it feels like things don't budge, even in the Providence Public School System, which was taken over by the state a few years ago, is a perfect example, where you've got a small urban district, and it feels like you take one step forward and two steps backward all the time.
Yeah, no, I would definitely agree. I've seen that in small rural districts, and that's actually one of the toughest places, is small rural districts in blue states, because you have a mountain of authority coming down from the state, trying to push you around to do stuff that your community has no interest in. And then, yeah, it's a different set of challenges. I think you're right about that. If it's a smaller school district, the challenge isn't that it's so big that it's hard to change, it's that there's a lack of resources, and that's what makes it hard to change.
Okay, I guess, talking about curriculum for a second, because there's adoption of a curriculum, and then there's implementation, right? And I get so sick of hearing about the word, but it's true. So I guess my question is, what role does the school board play in adopting a curriculum? And also, how hot, like, do you see, it seems to me that a lot of mistakes are made in this area. So my question, I guess, to you is like, what can you share with the public about the role that a school board plays in vetting and adopting a curriculum? And then perhaps the challenges that exist, that even if you actually do get the right one, getting buy-in from the district so that it's actually implemented, again, you're never going to have 100% fidelity, but at least, you know, mostly with fidelity.
Yes, and so for me, curriculum is probably the most important part of education reform. And I'm a little bit biased because a lot of my background, as far as education policy, I've worked in public policy for a long time, but education policy, I got a lot more involved in when my wife and I started a classical charter school here in Jacksonville about five years ago, and it's grown to be 1,000 kids with another 1,000 on the waitlist. And what stood out to me about the curriculum that we have as a classical charter school is not just how bad the curricula are in traditional public schools, but the opportunity cost of how good they could be. Curriculum, to me, is the future of the country. What kids learn, what they come to believe at even a subconscious level will guide everything about the future of our democracy for the next generation. And if we teach them from a good curriculum, where A, they just have a good understanding of just a base of knowledge, but B, they're also taught the type of curriculum that you get in a classical education setting where you use history as the framework to teach every other aspect of the acquisition of knowledge. Not only do you research-proven, not only do you retain information and recall information better, but you don't need to have sort of the conservative reactions to left-wing curriculum, where we try to tack on some patriotic and constitutionalistic standards, which I'm for, those are good standards, please, we should have them. But they wouldn't even be necessary if everybody learned the context of American history as an outpost of Western civilization, where what we did in 1776 was truly revolutionary in the course of human events, because the rest of Europe didn't even start having those types of revolutions to a large extent until the revolutions in 1848. And so when students come to understand history from that depth, and they understand that the torch of liberty is being passed on to them as the next generation that's taken thousands of years to fight for, going back to ancient Greece in 1,000 B.C., you don't have to teach them to be patriotic and love their country. They're going to come to that understanding naturally, which is a deeper, more authentic sense of patriotism. So that's my preamble to why I think your question is critically important, that we get curriculum right. Now, to your actual question, the school board's role in setting curriculum typically comes down to setting curricular standards, not choosing a specific curriculum. And every state and every locality is a little bit different, but as a general principle, even the U.S. Supreme Court has said that the local education authority is the highest-making, decision-making body in any area. So it should be up to the school board to set curricular standards as much as they want to. But just like any other policymaking process, and to your point, you can set a standard, but then what actually gets taught is another question. One of the guys that we have come to a lot of our conferences, and we've shared a lot of his materials, is an education researcher from the American Enterprise Institute, Robert Pondisio, who's also a former teacher, a big fan of classical education.
And a good friend of mine.
Oh, good, well, I love Robert.
Yeah, me too, one of the best.
He makes a really, really good case for, A, just classical education, we're both fans of that, but B, the fact that what really winds up happening is, teachers will go online and wind up just downloading random stuff off the internet that they happen to agree with. And then you have a lot of other teachers that are on the other side of the spectrum, and they're just teaching whatever it is that's handed to them, but there's very little engagement with the actual documents. So there's a couple of things that school boards can do. One is setting curricular standards that actually adhere to a specific vision for curriculum. There's a lot of different parts to curriculum. I think the most important things are, one, a preference for high-quality instructional materials. That means content-rich, high-quality. So a lot of the political debate over, you know, is there a left-wing bias to the instructional materials that we have, I think can be circumvented by just having a preference for high-quality materials. So those would be materials that are academically rigorous, that are at the leading edge, the top notch of, you know, academic research in a given area. So that automatically precludes things like the 1619 Project and any other new, you know, radical political ideology from creeping into the classroom because they're not academically rigorous. And to me, you know, one of the things I was surprised by getting involved in education was that there's actually a debate in education circles around whether or not we ought to have content-rich materials. There are a large number of people who think that kids actually can't learn, that they just don't have the bandwidth to be challenged by a large amount of information. And yet, we found research, and we can send this on to anybody who wants to see it, a school board member or concerned parent, that shows that content-rich curricula benefits everybody, including people from challenging socioeconomic demographics. It closes achievement gaps across every metric you can think of. It's fairly settled science that this works best, and yet it's not what's being done in a lot of school districts. And that's the second thing that school boards can do to make sure that their vision for curriculum is being adhered to, is, you can hire outside groups to come in and audit what teachers are actually teaching in the classroom. And we have specific recommendations on that and partner groups that we work with, if anybody wants to learn more about that.
Can I just ask a clarifying question here? You're saying curricular standards, but that's different from the state standards. So is there another phrase that's commonly used? Like, would the curricular standards be like scope and sequence that's often used?
So it varies widely.
Okay, I just want to make sure that listeners know that there's state standards that you, which is the material you must cover. But then the school district gets to decide, how are they going to cover that? So they want all kids to be able to write a thesis statement, or they want all kids to know, you know, about, I don't know, certain important, they want students to engage with our founding documents. But the way that the schools do that, they have a lot of flexibility in deciding how they do that, versus curricular standards, which is what you're sort of talking about, which is much more specific to that school district, or, you know, charter school network, or whatever it is.
Right, yeah, exactly. And, yeah, and that does vary widely by state, but the way it usually works in most districts is there's some person on the administrative team who's in charge of the curriculum. And sadly, a lot of times, what that person does is, they go out and get wind and dined by content providers, and then they wind up just picking something that they have very little actual intellectual engagement with. So that's another place where the school board is well within their rights to say, "Hey, this is the curriculum that you're teaching, these are the standards that we set. You're not following them, come back to us with three proposed curricula that you think follow our standards better." And then we have, you know, recommendations on what high-performing, effective curriculum. And then the other thing is, in a lot of states, the state will also vet certain curricula. So you can't just go pick whatever you want. There's a list of, say, 40 or 50 or fewer in a lot of states. So as an interesting example of this, our partner group in Oregon, which is a very challenging state to work in, as you can imagine, was looking at their curriculum. And so I was looking at their state standard, their list of approved curricula, and to see if there was any in there that I recognized. What I found was, the classical curriculum, the core knowledge sequence that we use in our charter school was already approved in the state of Oregon. So any school board in Oregon that wants to use the same classical curriculum that we use at our high-performing charter school here in Florida could do so tomorrow if they wanted to. So that's a lot of what school boards can do, is just doing a deep dive analysis of what roles and responsibilities do I already have available to me, and then putting together the political capital to make that happen.
That's a really great point. Don't assume that whatever's that, you know, because people are feeling kind of down on education in general, they may be assuming that everything on the approved list is bad, but that's often and usually, I think, not the case. And so you may already have a menu where something on there is excellent, and you guys just have chosen the wrong one, and you could just quickly switch because it's already on your approved list. That's a really good point. Okay, so for the parents and grandparents who are watching and listening, that might be thinking of running for school board either soon or someday, are there qualities that you think of that really can make an effective school board member?
There's a lot, absolutely. Well, A, you know, that's a fantastic question. I would encourage anybody to do it. I think, you know, it's one of the most important things you can do is fixing. And, you know, I'm a big believer in acting locally, and anybody who is thinking about taking that step, I just think that's one of the most commendable things you could spend your time doing, because it's a hard job, but I don't think there's anything more important than what kids learn. But the, you know, I think the things that make effective school board members are people who come into it with a vision for what they're trying to do, and who really, maybe somewhat ironically, eschew politics completely. So I think it's important to have a strong sense of your own values and the things you want to get done, but realize that policymaking is the art of the possible. And you have to build coalitions. So having a sort of like, you know, a political mindset for what are the issues where I know I can build consensus and start creating good relationships with your fellow school board members, and then you can start to turn around a school district around the things that are not necessarily controversial. And I think the challenge is, that's almost sort of like two frames of mind, because on the one side, you have an ironclad dedication to principles, because, you know, when the rubber meets the road and the bullets start flying, it becomes really hard to stand true to principles. Because like we were talking about before, inertia is an extremely powerful force. There's teachers' unions and 100 other outside influences that are going to be standing between you and implementing your vision. And then on the other side, you also have to be always mindful of how to create compromise, how to bring people together, and how to present the reforms that you want to create in a way that is going to be palatable and popular. And there's no shortage of examples that we've found across the country of people who have done this, starting in really districts that were ideologically unaligned with a reform agenda, but piece by piece, because certain school board members were able to keep both those parts of the mindset at all times, they were able to slowly make changes that eventually completely turned around certain school districts.
Okay, so now I want to talk a little bit more about parents or people that may be going to meetings, walking up to that microphone. How can parents be effective, I guess, is my question, in terms of what are some good action items for the parents that are watching right now? And also, and this could be even more important, what would you advise against?
Well, I think the first, most important thing is, you have to have a really, and this is true for school board members too, so I'm not just picking on parents or anybody, but having your facts straight. If you come in and you have a specific point to make, and you have, you know, some research that backs it up or something like that, and that's where I think working with a PDE is extremely important, because, I mean, you guys have just put out a mountain of extremely high-level, buttoned-up analysis that's completely unassailable. Because, you know, the thing is, like, if someone's going up to do public comments or something like that in a school board meeting, we're probably talking about a hotly contested issue. And so there's going to be people on the other side. And if there's any chinks in the armor, they're going to find those, and they're going to use that to undermine your position. So going in with a completely buttoned-up, bulletproof argument is probably the most important thing.
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead, no, go ahead.
Other than that, is just, you know, having, you know, just having the confidence of your convictions, but not going overboard with it, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I think I would add here too, that to stay away from ad hominem, and, you know, sort of like those personal attacks and name-calling, and I'm kind of like, I'm sort of the unofficial PDE brand ambassador in ways, partly because I have such strong feelings about how bad it is to engage in name-calling when you're really trying to get good work done. And so, just And so just for, even though you may want to. So it's not that the people that go to the podium with their facts straight and a measured but firm tone. It's not that they're not venting to other people using ad hominem, right? Because we're all human beings. It's just that in that forum, I think that it's, you don't want to put people on the defensive. And, well, I actually might take that back. It's okay to put them on the defensive when what you're talking about is substantive. If you're talking about, you know, that your science scores, you've got eleven percent of your kids proficient in science. You know, or, 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 you know, you say eighty-nine percent of our kids aren't proficient in math and you keep sending out letters about how great we're doing. In that sense, but I guess what I mean is like, sort of those, those, that's, it's like that social media tone of just kind of like going after people in a personal way. Because it does give them permission, sort of, to sort of stop listening. And that's not what you want. So just as someone who's learned over the years myself and my own evolution, that my, my recommendation is to do your venting before the meeting and then really stick to substance. And, and it is true, we at PDE have tried really hard to find different ways, not just to help inform parents and give them information and resources, but also to help them feel confident, which I just think is crucial. I mean, it takes a lot of confidence and courage just to go and speak at a public meeting, especially a meeting that's packed. Because people are talking about a really, you know, controversial issue. And so people should, again, just check our site, because we are always here trying to find ways to arm you with information and knowledge and confidence. So that you sound really smart and you can be really effective. And you don't end up having to rely on that ad hominem because you don't have the actual substance there in front of you.
Absolutely. No, that, I think that can't be underscored too much. And, you know, there's a feedback loop between the community and the school board. And what happens oftentimes is the people who are part of, what we refer to as the education establishment, the people who are opposed to making the deep necessary changes, they show up to school board meetings. They're often the only ones that show up to school board meetings. And then the school board members who are on our side of these issues, they feel alone. And so when, when you guys are getting people out there to even just support the people who are trying to do the right things, that makes a huge amount of difference. I hear from school board members all the time that are like, I love it when parents come out in a positive way and support what we're trying to do. Because they're gonna hear it from the other side. So to your point, you know, avoiding all the ad hominem stuff, keeping it positive to the extent that you can. There's times when, you know, negativity is warranted, but doing it in the right way, it really does support the school board members who are on your side.
Yeah, that is another really good point, is that a lot of these meetings are poorly attended. And it is true, like, there are gonna be times where that school board member that, that you are so grateful for, you love what they're doing, like, they sometimes need some cover. And if you can just be in the audience, even as a presence and a support, it does go a long way. Because the, because there's a lot of sort of like, kind of like activist types that they'll, they'll just show up to every meeting. They'll, they can be intimidating, they can be disruptive. And it's just nice for people to know that there's somebody there in their corner. Okay, final questions. Well, my last question actually is what, is there anything I didn't ask you about your organization that you would really like to share?
Well, thank you. Yeah, I think, you know, A, we're just, we're very excited to be working with PDE. Y'all have been great partners to us, just everybody in the organization I've talked to. I mean, y'all are really, really among the best. So thank you for that and thank you for, for working with us. But other than that, you know, I would encourage anybody to check us out on our website and on our social media. We have a newsletter that I think has some of the best curated content about education reform news. So anybody who wants to keep up to date on what's going on across the country, you know, that's another good resource that, that might be worth checking out.
And David, I assume that even, even if the person's in a district, like, let's say even where I live right now, where there's very little chance that the school districts or anybody's gonna really be partnering with you guys based on what I can tell. But I suspect that there's still a lot of really good information for people who live in places where, you know, they may not be in a district that's gonna partner with you guys or even, you know, look at you with affection. But, but there may, but there's still stuff there for people, right? That they could use, you know, in, in dealing with their own local issues.
Definitely, definitely. And part of our strategy too is, I believe in, in walking with people where they're at. If there is a school, and we have people that show up to our meetings and that are involved with our state groups, school board members who are definitely on the other side of the aisle. But if they agree with us about any one thing, we will work with them to get that one thing done. And I think actually, the science of reading and literacy standards are a really good example of that. So, you know, one of the pioneering states of that was the state of Mississippi, where, I mean, you know, Mississippi was considered, you know, with all due respect, kind of a laughing stock. Everybody's like, well, at least we're not Mississippi in terms of literacy rates. And now they're middle of the pack in the country, which is a stunning turnaround. You don't see stuff like that. And it's because they had a really good education commissioner and they passed literacy standards and they followed them. And then that education commissioner was hired away and now is leading the education department in Maryland. And you're not gonna find a bluer state than Maryland.
Right.
But my, the, I think what that shows is that regardless of where a school board is at politically, if they're willing to do at least one good thing in terms of academic outcomes, there's stuff to be done there. And if you're a parent in a school district where you're like, these guys are all crazy, there's nothing that can be done. That might be true, but it might not be. And what I've actually, and there's polling on this too. If you look at the, the political makeup of most school boards, you've got your dyed-in-the-wool left, your dyed-in-the-wool right, but the bulk of them really are persuadable moderates. And if we choose our issues wisely and if we engage with them in a, in a good way, I think real change can be made anywhere.
Yeah, I really agree with that. I think that we see a lot of issue-specific coalitions and issue-specific partnerships happening, where, you know, they may say, we probably disagree on nine out of ten things, but this one thing, whether it's gender ideology, whether it's, you know, phonics and, and the science of reading, whether it's this merit issue in some of these exam schools, et cetera. You can get to do a lot together, so I think that's a really well-taken point. Okay, well, anyway, last question is, where can people follow you and how can they find you? Which I think you already sort of said, but just reiterate it one more time.
Sure, thank you, yeah. SBAe network dot org is our website. And we've got links to all our socia ls on there. We're on Facebook, LinkedIn and Twitter. I think it's SBAe Network for most of those as the actual handle. And we're pretty active on all those. So definitely happy to, to get follows and, and any other groups and people, you know, interact with us and, and we'll follow you back.
This has been great. I learned a ton. I'm really grateful that you guys are doing this. I for sure think that it was needed and I think that the National School Boards Association revealed that to us in recent years. So anyway, thank you again, David, for joining us. Everybody, check out their work at the, now I have to make sure I say it absolutely correctly, School Boards for Academic Excellence. I'm not great with acronyms, I have to confess. I would die if I lived in DC, because I don't, can't do acronyms. And, and to everybody watching, thank you for joining us and for taking out the, taking the time. Again, if you have questions about this conversation, please either reach out to David and hit the network or reach out to us. You can find us at defendinged.org as well as on our social media pages. And with that, we're gonna say goodbye for now, but we'll talk to you soon. Thanks.